Good evening, everyone. Welcome. Please stand for the pledge and remain standing. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We have Pastor John Nichols from Harvest Bible Chapel. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Everybody pray with me, please. Jesus, every day is a gift from you, including today. We thank you so much for today and all the blessings that we've already experienced and those yet to come. We thank you for this great town that we get to live in. What a gift it is and the beauty that surrounds us. We thank you for our town council and how hard they work in their faithfulness and doing their best to lead this town. We thank you too for your majesty and your power and your grace and so much more that are evident in your beautiful creation around us and how you also share those things with us. Your word says that you give wisdom to those who ask. And additionally, your word tells us to seek the welfare of our city. So we ask for this wisdom for our leaders. We ask that they would seek the welfare of Fountain Hills, that you would give them the wisdom to know what's right, and that they would do what is right. Give them that courage and wisdom and discernment to do what is right, even if it's hard or not popular, Jesus. We pray too for peace in these challenging times. With all that we are facing as a nation and as a town, we pray that we would remember your words to do for others as we would like done for us. We would remember to consider others as more important than ourselves in these challenging times. Help us with this, Jesus, we pray. We also pray for all of us that we would do our part. Every one of us that calls this town home, whether we're here for a few months or a year round, we would do our part to help support and work with our leaders for the welfare of Fountain Hills. Lastly, Jesus, we ask you to bless Fountain Hills. In addition to your wisdom, you would make known your will and your love for all of us here in this town. You would pour your peace out upon us, and you would help us to work together for the welfare of this great and wonderful town. Thank you, Jesus. In your great name we pray. Amen.
Mayor Dickey? Vice Mayor Spelitch?
President.
Councilmember Charnow?
Here.
Councilmember Tolles?
Here.
Councilmember Brown? Councilmember Magazine?
Here.
Councilmember Friddell?
Here.
Thank you, Liz. We start with our reports by Mayor, Councilmembers, and Town Manager. Grady, do you have anything?
Just briefly, Mayor. Thank you. Mayor and Council, I'm pleased to report that, as you recall, during the summertime, we had a major upgrade to both the audiovisual equipment in this room and also our broadcast equipment, including the cameras and the control room, which has racks and recording equipment. Cox, this week, thanks to IT Administrator Mike Chicarone, was able to get Cox to do the last major upgrade, which now our Channel 11 in town is in high definition. So everything that you see now fits the entire screen. It's very bright and vibrant, and our televised council meetings are going to come across much more professional and much more vibrant than they have since we've done the upgrade. And then I just wanted to let you know that our Fountain Hills shoulder widening project is progressing very well, and they did the concrete curbing, I believe, and completed that. And they're going to be nearing the completion very soon of the asphalt. So I feel very good with that particular project, and that's all I have at this time to report.
Thank you, Grady. So we haven't met since October 20th. Anybody have any reports? Oh, Councilman? Vice Mayor for now?
Yeah. Yeah, Liz kind of took it away from me early there. I don't know. Anyway, yeah, as far as Valley Metro, I'm on that board, and we did the last meeting. They did talk about some proposed service changes, and we had that meeting here about the transportation study for Fountain Hills. But they are proposing to eliminate that Route 514 Express, you know, in and out of Fountain Hills. And once that's gone, that route would start and end down there at the Mustang Transit Center, Shane 90th Street down in that area. They are accepting public comments through December 4th, and it'll come back to the Valley Metro Board in January. So I just wanted to talk about that briefly. And then another big discussion was Broadway Curve. They're looking at doing a huge improvement project down there, I think, next year. Valley Metro is trying to look into mitigation strategies to try to help alleviate the mess that's going to create. But it's a $700 million project, and they're replacing 10 bridges, and it's just going to be a nightmare. So I'm sure there's a few of our residents that have to traverse Broadway Curve every once in a while. But thankfully, I've been spoiled by living and working up here for many years, so I don't have to go through that anymore. We did have a Fountain Hills Coalition Sector Meeting a couple of weeks ago, and they were quite pleased with council action on the marijuana proposition and us taking kind of preemptive action there. And of course, as we all know, that proposition did pass in 2007, so they were thankful for that. And been working with Grady and Mike from IT as far as hosting a panel discussion. We're going to have it here in the council chambers on December 3rd, and that's about meth and fake opiate pills and fentanyl and those types of things. So staff has been very cooperative with us on scheduling and coordinating that and also participating in the parade of Thanksgiving that the chamber is coordinating. And they've been trying to collect a lot of turkeys for Extended Hands Food Bank, so there's still time to do that if anyone wants to participate. It goes to a good cause. They're trying to, I think, get 300 turkeys. So hard to believe it's next week already, right? So no parade, but instead you can, well, you can still go on the turkey trot, right? So we're still having the turkey trot. And let's see. I know some of us were down there for Veterans Day Ceremony last week. Our mayor was a keynote speaker for that, did a great job, so thanks for that. And then I just want to say a great job on getting the buildings painted. They look really good, and I know Councilman Magazine wanted to wait another 10 years, but I'm glad we went ahead and did that. So thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Mayor. And the buildings do look great. I just want to recognize the Chamber of Commerce. I want to recognize this town council to have the courage to move forward with the Fountain Hills Fair. There were a lot of strict health regulations that were put on the Fountain Hills staff, and I think Betsy Lavoie and her team did a great job. We had quite a bit of traffic in the community, and I was down there, and I witnessed myself. I would say, you know, high 90s compliance in regards to masks, cleaning procedures. They just did a great job. I'm happy to see the businesses seem to be thriving, and that's what we need. We need those type of activities. We can't shut down. We can't risk these businesses losing their livelihoods, so I'm very happy to see that. And I hope everyone stayed healthy, and we can continue to have events in this community such as that, and of course adhere to the safety procedures that we put forth. So thank you for allowing that to move forward. Thanks to this council, and thank you to the Chamber of Commerce and Betsy and all the leadership associated, and all the volunteers. A lot of civic organizations volunteered and were part of that, so it's a real community effort. So thank you.
Thank you.
I too attended the Veterans Day Memorial last week. It was a very nice service. So again, we appreciate our veterans. Thanks for your service. And like art, I was down at the fair six times over the weekend, just making sure that the protocols were being followed. And I agree with you, it was high 90s, like 99%. So I think everybody hopefully will be safe and healthy from that. And also want to give a little shout out to our chief fire department. There was a car fire right next door to our house this past weekend, and if you've never been involved in something like that, these guys are at the top of their game, very organized teamwork, and they got there and got this thing under control and actually saved the next-door neighbor's house from burning down. So it was kudos to our fire department. So thank you.
Thanks for saying so. Soon to be Vice Mayor.
I want to thank Chief Ott for spearheading and following through with EPCOR in regards to getting the keys and the training and everything to turn off fire hydrants if they're torn or run over or anything during an accident. It saves a lot of water, so thanks for following through on that. I'd like to put Councilmember Friddell in for a life-saving award. He fought that fire next door to his neighbor's house with a garden hose, a fully engulfed car. Not the brightest thing he's done, but thank God he's still alive. On a serious note, the town of Fountain Hills lost one of its greatest citizens. Dr. C.T. Wright passed away, and I had the honor of speaking at his funeral October 31st. The mayor was so gracious as to give a proclamation for Dr. Wright's life and marry his wife. Just briefly, C.T. Wright was president of the Fountain Hills School Board. He was director of the clemency board. He was appointed by Governor Jan Brewer and kept on by Governor Ducey. I had the honor of serving on the governor's advisory council for aging with Dr. Wright. He was also past president of the Republican Club, very active in the NAACP. And if you ever heard Dr. Wright preach, he always said that Fountain Hills was by far the greatest place on earth. He was the biggest spokesperson for this town. He loved it dearly, and I loved him. So I just, thanks, Mayor, for doing that, and it was well appreciated by the family. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilman?
Yeah, I just want to follow up on that very sad situation with Dr. Wright. I want to confess that I saw him a number of times, supermarket and so on, shook his hand. He was always genial. I knew he was very active in the Republican Club and so on. But honestly, I didn't know anything about him until I read it in the paper, and my wife and I were both stunned at his background. He must have been an incredibly modest man, but what he has done, not just for this town but in his life, was really astounding to read about.
Thank you, Alan. I wanted to thank you for going, David, and representing the town so well and reading the proclamation at the service. I think Mike would remember, maybe in a gentler time, when I was on my way to a convention for Obama, and Dr. Wright was going for Mr. McCain, our senator, and Mike did a story on us. And just we sat down getting ready to do it, and we had the paper in front of us, and I said, "Let's arm wrestle," you know? So he did it, and we did that, and that was the picture that you did. So we also lost fairly recently another school board member, a former school board member, Carl Gadsmo, and they had waited, and they had the gathering for him this weekend. I wanted to mention the Make a Difference Day because I wanted to thank all the clubs and the organizations and the staff and all the individuals who volunteered, and our Kim Wickland, who made sure, in fact, that they were coordinated, as our volunteer coordinator. There are videos, and there was like this really neat heart-shaped poster that was made. We appreciate Paul Garby, who's on our McDowell Mountain Preservation Commission, and he did a video, PTO did a video, and they're all online, and just a very nice day. Grady and I attended a very safe opening of WekoPod, you know, the casino that we've been waiting for. There was a lot of excitement there, and of course, we wish our neighbors at Fort McDowell, Yavapai Nation, all the best on that. Staff and I have had meetings during this time with representatives from Dark Skies, from the school district. We met the superintendent, the Canadian Arizona Business Council, regular meetings of MAG and GPEC, the River Time Museum, and our Traffic and Pedestrian Safety Committee met, and I want to welcome Mike and Peggy, Councilwoman-elect McMahon, as new members of that committee. Veterans Day, that was an awesome morning. And just I wanted to mention that I posted a video of what would have been, you know, I used to do those Town Talk Tuesdays, and people could come and talk about whatever they wanted to, but I'm going to look forward to starting those again when we can gather. And these guys, remember, I would have two council people would come and say whatever was important to them, and then the folks that came could just ask us whatever, and we'd take the notes and we'd write them up and post them online. So and some of them, we actually, ends up being something that we do during the course of the year. So I look forward to being able to do that again. Any other comments? No? We will go on then to recognition of outgoing Vice Mayor Mike Charnow and incoming Vice Mayor David Spelitch. I want to thank you, Mike, very much. You're reliably doing all of your activities and going to all the meetings that are your responsibility. We really appreciate that very much. And David, we look forward to having you serve as our vice mayor for, is it eight, 10 months? Yes. So.
Three weeks.
In your dreams. You're not going anywhere. But thank you, and I don't know if things have changed yet or not, but we'll get to that, right? Next, I have a proclamation that I think is going well with something that the chamber is doing also, which is honoring our local businesses. This is about our small businesses. So I'm going to read this. Whereas the town of Fountain Hills celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions that they make to our local economy and community, according to the U.S. Small Business Administration, there are 30.7 million small businesses in the United States, representing 99.7% of all firms with paid employees, and they are responsible for about 65% of net new jobs created from 2008 to 2018. And whereas small businesses employ 47.3% of the employees in the private sector, 62% of U.S. small businesses reported that they need to see consumer spending return to pre-COVID levels by the end of 2020 in order to stay in business. 65% of small business owners said it would be most helpful to their business to have their regulars return and start making purchases again, and 3/4 of U.S. consumers are currently looking for ways to shop small and support their community. And whereas 96% of consumers who shopped on Small Business Saturday agree that shopping at small, independently-owned businesses supports their commitment to making purchases that have a positive social, economic, and environmental impact, and 97, a lot of percentages here, 97% of consumers who shopped on Small Business Saturday agree that small businesses are essential to their community. Whereas 95% of consumers who shopped on Small Business Saturday reported the day makes them want to shop or eat at small, independently-owned businesses all year long, not just during the holiday season. And whereas Fountain Hills supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities, and advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving a Small Business Saturday. So therefore, I, Jenny Dickey, Mayor of Fountain Hills, do hereby proclaim November 28th, 2020, a Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. So we have a proclamation, and I know James is working on this with the chamber for our town, and we would definitely appreciate you supporting our businesses. Councilman?
Yeah, about, I don't know, three, four weeks ago, I read that approximately 100,000 small businesses had gone out of business in the United States. And I'm sure that by now, it's a lot more, and I'm sure that by this spring, it's going to be more than that because of COVID getting worse and worse. That's a lot of people being thrown out of work, and it's a real tragedy. And I'll just comment that I just hope the House and the Senate can get together with a financial package.
Thank you, Councilman. Our next item is scheduled public appearance and presentations. Our first one is by Rural Metro. An update from Captain, I think?
Actually, it's Brian Davis, the Fire Chief of Rural Metro's Arizona Operations, is here tonight. He's actually the, one of Dave's bosses besides me. He's the Rural Metro boss for our Fire Chief. So Mr. Davis is going to give a brief presentation to the council.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Mr. Miller, I have to thank you again for the return invitation. I was actually supposed to be here a few months ago, but as we all know, COVID somewhat changed all of our lives. I have to say too, I'm very deeply honored to be here as one of the very first people to appear in high definition. That's very exciting. I'm going to proceed without my glasses. You'll notice Dave did the audiovisual for me. So you are all still in 720P to me, but you look marvelous nonetheless, even though my eyes are not high-def. So I'm here today just to give you kind of a snapshot, kind of a global update of where we're at. You know, Chief Ott does a marvelous job running things day-to-day and keeping you up to speed on what's going on here in Fountain Hills and handling those car fires next door. And thankfully, we were there to back you up. We're glad we were there. But periodically, we get the question, what about the rest of Rural Metro? And so I thought I'd share kind of a snapshot of that. So the Fountain Hills operation is part of what we call our Central Arizona Operation. That consists of 13 stations fully staffed and about 200 people. That's a little larger than what some people actually know us as from the past. The Rural Metro of the past really isn't what we used to be. We are far different today. That's part of what we call our Arizona Operation. The Arizona Operation includes Pima and Yuma Counties, so the southern half of the state. That's actually 27 stations and almost 500 staff, 500 full-time staff. That includes three fleet maintenance facilities and also three dispatch centers. So it's actually a larger operation than what some may think. That is, of course, part of our community fire service that we provide around the nation. Some know Rural Metro from Arizona but don't necessarily know Rural Metro from the rest of the country or the other services that we provide. If you go to Josephine County, Oregon, you'll find Rural Metro just like Fountain Hills. If you go to Knoxville, Tennessee, Knox County, Tennessee, you'll find Rural Metro just like Fountain Hills. But we expand further than that. Many are completely unaware that many of the Chicago-area fire departments are, in fact, staffed by Rural Metro. And then the other side of our business, the specialty fire, we're very proud of the folks that do that other piece that, again, gets kind of overlooked. If you go to Sikorsky Aircraft in Florida, you'll find Rural Metro there. If you received a FedEx package that went through the Memphis hub, it went through under the eyes of Rural Metro Fire and many places like that around the country where all of these services come from the same place where you get yours. You would ask then, well, what about this graphic? Because obviously, that doesn't necessarily say Rural Metro. It's been a banner year for Rural Metro. Even though this has been the year of unmentionable words with COVID and other things that have impacted our lives, it actually has been a good year in our growth into Global Medical Response, or GMR. So we are one of the GMR family of companies, many of which you're familiar with just like us, but kind of a three-legged stool that really makes up where you're getting your services from now. You are obviously familiar with Rural Metro, that one leg. The second leg of the stool is our air side of the business. So if you get transported emergency by either rotary or fixed wing, or many times non-emergency, usually by fixed wing, around the country and actually around the world, chances are you may have been transported by GMR. And then the third leg of the stool is AMR Ambulance, our ground side, which everyone is familiar with around the country and around the world. That three-legged stool really makes up the foundation of what we are. You'll notice almost 38,000 employees all over the country, all over the nation, really doing the same things we do here everywhere. What that means is we can now tap into resources and have some availability of information and things that, you know, the average organization wouldn't have. We participate along with all of those other employees in the things that we do to serve the nation, which translates down to what we do here for you. This year, in 2020, your firefighters responded to New York City. They responded to New Jersey. They responded to Louisiana. They responded to Texas. They responded to California, Oregon, elsewhere here in Arizona. That was for storms, wildfires, COVID response, transporting thousands and thousands of COVID patients, responding to what's happening worldwide, responding to it in a large scale, but also responding to it in a small scale here. And what do I mean by that? What does that translate to what it does for you? The behind-the-scenes that you receive in the service from Rural Metro is the piece that you really would never be aware of if I didn't come share it with you tonight. So when the rest of the country was having PPE shortages, we had reduced stocks, but we didn't encounter shortages. Our large buying power makes it as such as that we were buying PPE well in advance and actually created our own cash. There is actually a GMR cash, just like the Strategic National Stockpile. A portion of that stash is in Tempe at our fleet maintenance facility. And so we have PPE all over the nation, ready to go, buying in advance so that when things started to go down in numbers, we had that to back us up. So you never had any real possibility of running out of PPE in Fountain Hills because we were going to make sure that didn't happen. The other thing it does, though, is it brings to us our kind of staff of medical experts. The other thing that happened during the course of all this is all of your firefighters were following a regiment that really was kind of vetted and enacted nationwide. In all of the thousands and thousands of patients that have been transported, COVID-positive patients, you didn't have to worry about that being shared as much as it did in other communities. So far in Central Arizona Fire, we have had a total of 17 positive employees. Now, keep in mind, we're transporting COVID-positive patients all over the valley every day, and we have had a total of 17 COVID-positive patients. And quite frankly, just like the rest of us, we're pretty sure, those employees are pretty sure, that at least half of them were really kind of Walmart, not at work. But that's okay. We just assumed that everything that was COVID-positive obviously was work-related, and we took care of those folks. What does that really translate now to on the ground here? What that brings us is really the knowledge base that probably is, and my key point for tonight, the most important thing to share, is that even though we don't all necessarily know where to lie our faith in what is fact, what is fiction, what is true, what is maybe a partial reality of the COVID, there's a lot of confusion, a lot of misunderstanding, and quite frankly, it's a moving target. It's very difficult to stay on top of. But your folks here in your fire department have the full resources of that whole national organization, keeping track of them and making sure that what they're providing to your residents is at the cutting edge of where we're at on COVID. We are all very hopeful about the vaccines, and we all hope this goes away really soon. But the fact of the matter is, I can share with you from a national call this morning that yesterday, as recent as yesterday, GMR transported the highest number of COVID-positive patients we have transported in any single day through the entire pandemic yesterday. So we hope it goes away soon, but we're confident that the medical care we're providing to your community, along with backing up your volunteer firefighters on car fires, we're confident that you're getting a very good service. And in that, I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you so much. Any questions, Councilman?
Yeah, thank you for that presentation.
Yes, sir.
Thank you again for that presentation. Pardon my ignorance, is Rural Metro a for-profit company?
We are. Yes, sir.
Okay. When you have to transport somebody across the country or across states, who pays for that?
It's a mixture of either the insurance or the patient pays. There are also membership programs that many of the providers offer a membership program.
I have heard any number of horror stories.
They're horrible.
Where people are charged $30,000, $40,000, $50,000. How is that justified?
That, quite frankly, comes down to the slight amount of actual receipts that are received after the services provided. It's quite frankly, no different than an ambulance. The fact of the matter is, ambulance billing causes us probably more frustration than anybody else, and I would deeply love to not have that situation the way it is. But there's a lot of kind of players involved in ambulance billing. And just like an ambulance bill, which quite frankly, is, when it comes out, is a very high number, the actual result of payment is usually $300 to $500. Even in those extremely large air bills, very rarely does that entire air bill get paid. That's just simply the original billing, and then it changes to the actual collections, just like an ambulance. They're horrible.
Then why do people get bills like that?
The industry is simply at that point, and we would prefer to not have it that way, too. Those are people way above me that try to figure those out, but I can tell you that on the call, on the national call, I was speaking about that we had this morning. One of the topics was how do we help eliminate just the confusion and frustration in billing for everything EMS-related?
Okay. I mean, I'm holding your feet to the fire.
Yes, sir.
And you don't make those decisions, I'm sure, but... But I just fail to see how putting somebody on a plane, even with staff and so on, can cost that kind of money. And if it isn't, you say a lot of it isn't paid, the patient gets a bill in the mail for $30,000, $40,000, which scares the hell out of people and have to figure out what they're going to do with it. After hearing some horror stories, we decided that I was never take a long trip like overseas without insurance, but not everybody knows that, and that really troubles me. The other question I have is that, you said you have catches of PPE around the country?
We do.
Is it in warehouses or what?
Yes, sir.
Well, I keep seeing on TV that there are all kinds of shortages, that nurses, in fact, I've seen it a number of times, nurses are wearing masks for 30 days. Why?
I don't know that there is enough for the entire nation. Now, do we sell that PPE also? We do.
And you don't know how people know about it, that it's for sale and that you have it sitting in warehouses?
Well, we rotate that stock. I guess I should explain. It's not a pile just sitting dormant. What happens is we buy the stock, it ships into the warehouse. Prior to its arriving, they ship it to us. So the PPE that we're using day in and day out, much of that is no longer coming from the vendors. That's coming from one of our cash warehouses.
And where do you get it from?
From one of our cash warehouses around the country, primarily out of Dallas.
But where's it manufactured?
Oh, the typical manufacturers that hospitals and everybody else buy from.
Which is?
Um...
China?
No, no. Well, it depends on where they manufacture it.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
I don't... Yeah, I don't know. I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Just say, thank you, Mayor. I'd just say thank you for your presentation. It was actually very informative, and I had no idea of the global presence of your company and organization. So fantastic that we're in good hands here, and we got a great team in Fountain Hills, and thank you for coming to Fountain Hills and come back with Alan's questions next time. And I'm kidding.
I know, but I do appreciate that.
I'm not, I appreciate it.
China!
I could share that, you know, I'm actually new to Rural Metro. I've been here less than a year. I've been a municipal party for decades, but I'm here because of GMR. I'm here because of the GMR presence and really what it is we can offer. Just so many more things that we just don't have an opportunity to do kind of in the private sector. I actually come from Lake Havasu City, so I can say that I feel very at home here in Fountain Hills.
Okay. I apologize for nailing you with questions that are not part of your portfolio.
No problem.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Grady, do you have anything?
No, but, you know, just so the council understands. So I meet periodically with Brian. I think we've been meeting, you know, with the COVID situation, either on the phone or periodically. So we do that to maintain the relations, and if there's anything that relates to our Rural Metro contract, any questions, we both kind of work it out mutually, along with Chief Odd as well, so.
Thank you. We appreciate all of your work with the firefighters, having to go out to the wild lands and just a tough year all around, so we really appreciate your help and thank you for coming tonight. And if you have any questions or need anything from us, just let us know, please.
Okay, thank you. It's been a pleasure. Dave will bring you an application. Thank you.
He did show up in shorts and flip-flops, which is very kind of right along our alley. I did try to get Chief Davis to buy a house here, but he opted to go to Mesa.
Sorry.
He's never coming back.
Thank you, Dave. Thanks, Captain. Next, we have a presentation, I believe by another Dave, for our financial audit results.
Mayor, if you don't mind, I'll just jump right into it. We have Jennifer Shields, our audit manager. She'll look familiar. This is the third year that Heinfeld Meach and Company has conducted and performed our financial audit, and she is going to present their report in a very, as you saw, there was a comprehensive annual financial report that was assisted in being prepared, but also, more importantly, the letters that she transmitted that are in the packet. With that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Shields.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Mayor, council members, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak with you this evening. As Mr. Miller said, this is, I think, the fifth year of our contract for financial audit services. And what we do for the audit, just kind of a brief synopsis, is we really only get to come out and visit with you a couple of times a year. This past year with COVID, things were a little bit different, but we did have the opportunity to come on site, and we work very extensively with David Pock and Bea in the finance office. But we also work with a number of other individuals throughout the town, and so I'd just like to say thank you to them and to Mr. Miller for all of the assistance that everybody provided us during the audit. An audit is never an easy undertaking, and certainly in this year, it has obviously provided some additional challenges with trying to maintain social distance and trying to, you know, get a lot more documentation electronically. And I'm happy to say that the town has done a really good job in keeping everything electronic so that we have the ability to request documents, they can be scanned over to us, and we can review them from, you know, other locations, which has proven very helpful during this time right now. So tomorrow, I'll be sending a letter over to Mr. Miller, and he'll share that with you. We call that our letter to governance. But what that letter is going to, I'm just going to cover like the brief synopsis of what it's going to have in it. We, it'll go through the, kind of like the process of what we were required to do, what the town was required to do, and it'll tell you in there that we had no disagreements with management about accounting principles. It'll also tell you that we had no difficulties, despite the year, no difficulties in performing the audit procedures that were required to perform. And also, there were no audit adjustments that were required to be made. So all of those are very good things. With respect to the actual reports that we issued, we issued the independent auditor's report on the financial statement, which is that big book. And so those are the financial statements of the town. We're happy to report that there was an unmodified opinion. So we've talked about this in prior years, that's sort of like the best audit opinion that you can do, or that you can receive. We also issued an independent accountant's report on the annual expenditure limitation as well as the highway user revenue fund. So those are some additional procedures that are required to be performed annually in accordance with state statute. And then last but not least, there was a report on internal control and compliance in accordance with government auditing standards that was also issued. And that report is where any disclosure of audit findings would be, if there were any to report. So the letter is short and sweet, it's just a little two-page letter, because there were no audit findings that were required to be reported. Let's see. And I think that's really all I wanted to share with you. So unmodified opinion, no audit findings, no audit adjustments, and a big thank you to the staff. And with that, I'm happy to stand for questions.
Thank you so much. Are there any comments or questions from council? You have anything you want to say, David, or? That, like, pretty much says it all. Well, thank you very much. We really appreciate it, and I obviously appreciate our staff being able to work with you and get this done and have it be such a successful document. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. Next, we have call to the public. Do we have any cards?
No.
No? Thank you. I don't know what you're saying over there, but I'm just going to move on.
No, Mayor, we have no public comment.
Thank you. Consent agenda, as always, if you have anything you'd like to take off, let me know. Otherwise, I take a motion to approve.
Motion approved.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? There we go. So our regular agenda item, our first one was going to be adopting the results of our general election, which was our general plan. Do you want to talk about this, or?
Well, excuse me, I can just report that we put together our canvas based on the numbers we received from Maricopa County elections, and we will not have those numbers until tomorrow. So we're unable to do the canvas tonight. What we are requesting is that we schedule a special meeting for maybe five minutes on Thursday afternoon sometime. We can do it by way of telephone so that we can go ahead and get that resolution adopted, canvassing the results. But it was, I can't say as far as numbers, it did pass, the ratification of the general plan did pass more than two to one, so.
Thank you. That was interesting, Liz, that one of the ways it was laid out, which I think was the email that you sent us, so if you look at who voted for and against, it was like a 71-29, but they added the 2,000 or so people that didn't vote at all, which made the number kind of skewed, if you ask me, but in any event, it did pass, but...
I agree with you, Mayor, on that, because I was like, I was literally having an argument with our town clerk. I said, you know, when you look at those who voted, it was 71 to 29%. But you have to count, you know, when you do the canvas of the election, you have to take both the under and the over votes. In this case, the under votes does drag that down. I want to just take this opportunity to thank the council. The council, you obviously, what I consider was a very good general plan, you referred this to voters. Really, John, kudos to you on your end. I know we're not going to be able to do this on Thursday, so I thought, I know on Thursday, you just want to have a real quick meeting. But, John, you did a super job of leading that whole general plan effort, and I thought that was excellent. And then Beau Larson, our community relations manager, did quite a bit with the, you know, the public engagement, civic engagement, trying to get people involved with that. And then we had all of our working groups that also attended the meetings throughout the process. So, you know, this was all about our community, and it's really, it has a stamp of approval, not just from those people who voted for it, but also for all those who were involved in it. Because this is really, this is our hometown general plan that the whole community got behind. So thanks to all of you, and I was very pleased to see that it had that kind of, you know, approval.
Thank you. Councilman?
Liz, what was the total number of votes? Do you know? Does anybody know?
I don't have that in front of me. I will have it after tomorrow.
Okay. I hope, you know, I hope it's a decent number, and maybe we should, depending on that, have a postmortem on how to increase the numbers in the future. You've got 10 years to figure it out.
Well, it, no matter what, it was about 65%, 66%.
66%, yeah. It was a good turnout.
34%. But that's when you take in the under votes. There's 2,000 people who didn't vote, so that dragged down the percentages of those who voted for it.
I was just curious how much of our population actually did vote.
Well, overall, if you look at the entire election, we had like a 91% turnout for Fountain Hills, but, and we have about 18,000 registered voters. But 2,000 of them, you know, there's a lot of stuff on the ballot, and so about 2,000 of them did not vote one way or the other on this. So you say you have 16,000 or so people voted for, you know, one way or the other, and it was 71-29%.
You know, we were very lucky. I've seen in past years where the municipal questions, the ballot items, are like the very last item. I don't know how we managed to get on the first page, but that was kudos.
I was surprised, yeah.
Because it's usually after all the judges and all the things that people don't vote, and then it gets to our item. So at least we're on the first page, second column, which I was very pleased with.
Yeah. So do you think you, is Thursday at 5:30? If Liz sends us out a phone number, and we can just go on the phone and do that? Is that going to be okay? All right, thank you. Our next item is going to be a public hearing on adopting the comprehensive user fee schedule that we had discussed on September 22nd. So I'm going to open it up. We'll listen to the presentation and discuss, if you'd like, and vote. Thank you. Now, David.
Hard to find the, there it goes. He's still back there, right? All right. There we go, yeah. High definition of the seal. All right, good evening, Mayor, good evening, council members. As the mayor had mentioned, we did have a work session on user fees at the end of September. This is just a brief summary of some of the things that we went over that night and where we can go from here. So as far as user fees in general, just a brief background, they are charged to individuals or groups for specific products, services, rentals that benefit that individual or group and not the entire community. This is the first comprehensive user fee study that the town's undergone, so it was a pretty heavy lift. This is, we're about a year and a half into this study. And I will mention, too, we also have our Will Dan consultants on the phone right now, so Pat Walker and Kevin Burnett. They're standing by in the wings in case we have any technical questions as far as the study goes. In general, fees, user fees should not exceed the cost that it costs the town to provide the product or the service. And then it's also recommended that these user fees be updated every five years just to keep things fresh. As far as revenue, user fees account for about 7% of the total general fund revenue each year. Our fiscal year '20, it made up 7%. That equates to about $1.3 million. So it is a good piece, but it's definitely not the largest. You can see that local sales tax and state share revenue make up a bulk of our revenue. So as far as the work session, it was held on September 22nd. The consultants provided a presentation on the study's methodology and findings. The consultants and staff also answered some of the questions that council had. We took the suggestions made at that work session, incorporated them into the fee schedule that's included with the resolution, and that's what we're here for tonight. So if adopted, the schedule will go into effect July 1st, which is also helpful because we're just starting the budget season, so we'd be able to use these fees to project next year's revenues, so. And with that...
David, for just clarification, so my understanding, my recollection, was at the council, at the end of the evening, after having all the justification and understanding the methodology that went into the cost of services and then the fees that were proposed, they went ahead for like 100% of the fees that were presented, they were inclined to approve as presented. I believe it was the vice mayor that brought up the request for a expedited fee, Vice Mayor Spelitch. And so you want to just bring that up since that wasn't part of the original fee schedule?
Sure. So at the end of that work session, it was council's direction, basically, to accept the proposed fees as they were presented in that meeting. That doesn't mean that all of them were adjusted to be full-cost recovery, because there were some that staff believed that they didn't need to be quite full-cost. But yes, everything that is proposed is what we went forward with. Vice Mayor Spelitch did have, did notice the expedited fee in the commercial permit, and he asked for there also to be one in the residential and in planning. So we added those into each category as well. So those were the only changes that we had made.
Thank you. Questions? Councilman?[1798.63] Thank you. Questions? Councilman?
My recollection may be wrong, but didn't we say that this would increase, the increased revenue would be around $525,000 per year? Is that wrong?
It's really tough to come up with what the projected revenue would be, since we don't, you know, these fees go everywhere from photocopies to, you know, building permits for hospitals to, you know, everything. So, trying to nail down a specific number, you know, if we were just talking about one fee, and the number of times that that fee was applied during the year, it'd be easy to do, but we've got quite a range. In general, I will say that most of the fees did increase. There were some that did decrease as well. So, I'm comfortable saying that revenues will increase if we have the same level of activity.
David, if I may.
Sure.
There was, so you had worked on a works, a spreadsheet that you had up on the screen, and it was really good, because it was able to show, all things being equal, with the fees that were in place that we had at the time. The fees as presented and as proposed, in theory, could increase and generate up to $500,000 additional in revenue. But that's where, that's where the council members bring that up, and I do recall that. But again, it wasn't hard, fast, and I think we were very cautious when that was presented, that that wasn't necessarily going to happen. It could, and, and it would likely be more than what we're generating now, but somewhere between.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Do we have any speaker cards? No speaker cards? I will, I'll close the hearing, and then we can vote.
Just had a quick question.
Oh, sure.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. David, do you recommend every five years, will this one provide basically a good base in terms of, you know, five years from now, the next study will be easier and cheaper and quicker, or what do you, what do you think on that?
Hopefully, all of the above. Yes, it does provide a good foundation, because it, we basically had to start from scratch, and look at each fee and how much time each individual staff member spends on that specific fee. Going forward, we can update, basically, the tables as far as salaries and benefits and that sort of thing. But we'd still revisit the time to make sure that we were still, you know, the process hasn't changed considerably. But the model's there, and it will be a lot easier to update.
Thank you. Anybody ready to make a motion?
Move approval.
Move to approve, adopt, move to adopt Resolution 2020-42 was moved by Alan. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thanks for all your work on this. Our next item is, I'll send it to Grady, and then you can, I think, Justin, right?
Sure. So, Mayor, Council, we use a system, you're familiar with cooperative purchasing agreements that we use for a number of different services. Well, one area that this, the town has gotten into of late has been job order contracting. A few years ago, we presented structural contracting as a possible job order contract, where you have basically a job order contract that has multiple vendors on, that are all licensed to do contracting for structural. Before you, we have both with 8C and 8D. We have a plumbing services contract, which would be a job order master agreement, and then we also have one for general electrical services. We have with us Kevin Snipes, our park superintendent, who is the one, it's a primary beneficiary from this, and he wishes to speak and explain a little bit more how this is going to work. Mr. Snipes?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. So, just as a, as kind of some background on this, so about a year and a half ago, we did the, the job order contract for the general contractors. And it's a town-wide contract, and we all do benefit from it. It's been used by multiple departments doing different tasks around town, such as sidewalks, restroom renovations. We've done, we're working on the fountain lighting project right now with that. So, we found it to be very beneficial in getting things done in a timely fashion, and saving us as staff, as well as our finance department, as well as the legal side of doing multiple contracts over and over and over again. So, now, we've done this for about a year and a half, and it's worked out really well, so we decided that we wanted to add some more specific fields of doing the plumbing and the, and the electrical side of things. The way that the job order contract works is we still get, you know, quotes or estimates from, from our vendors. They're just pre-approved vendors. So, it makes it to where that we're not having to go and get a contract. We already have the paperwork, the legwork done up front, so that it makes it easier for us to get things done in a timely fashion. If you have a clog in your restroom, you don't want to be going out and getting a contract to come back in and do the repairs. We want to get that thing back open. If we want to do, if we need to replace a stall, or we need to replace light poles, or something like that, this makes it to where we can get that done much quicker than what we've had to in the past by going back and having to do another contract. Once we get those estimates and those quotes, then it's a matter of, can they do it in a timely fashion? And if they, and then, how long will it take them to get it done once, when can they start on it? You know, how busy is the company? And a lot of times, we run into those problems as well. So, if that becomes an issue, then we can just go to someone else on the list, and we know that they're already vetted, and we're ready to roll again. So, it just, it really helps us out in getting things done and getting quality product to our residents. The, once the, how are we choosing the vendors that are going on these contracts? We put out for an RFQ, and we get some medals from them. We have several staff members that sit in, and we score on their submitted, to see that they meet our minimum requirements. And once they did, we accepted everyone that met our minimum requirement, so that we can choose anyone that meets those requirements. And we did the exact same thing. That's why we have 14 for the general contractors. I think it's 13 or 14 for them. And so, for the plumbing side, we ended up getting three vendors that we'll be able to use, and for the electrical side, there's five that, that met the minimum requirements. So, tonight, we're not asking for your consideration on spending extra money. It's just a matter of, it's, there, it's just a matter of being able to spend the budget that we already have. It's, it's not an extra new amount of funding that's going to go to this. The, so I don't know, I'm assuming that we'll do, one, one at a time for the, we'll do the consideration for 2021-007 for the general plumbing. On the first one, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer those at this time.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Councilman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Kevin, I'd be interested to know, did any Fountain Hills-owned businesses make either of the two lists?
We did not have any that, that put in for it, for this, for either one of these.
Okay, so, my question is, is, I would like to use businesses that are in Fountain Hills. Obviously, we have owners that live here. How do we increase, as a town, participation by businesses that are in town, the owners of these businesses? How do we get them to participate? Or, if they don't participate, why don't they participate? Because I'd like to include, if we're spending town money, let's give it to residents that live in town.
Yeah, and I agree. When we did the general contract, JOC, we got several that, that were on the list and that we've used for doing the sidewalks and for doing multiple projects that we've done in town. On this one, unfortunately, we, we just didn't get it. And, and that was part of our, biggest part of our goal when we started doing the JOCs was, we started out with a packet that was so long that we felt like our smaller vendors wouldn't even read it. And so, we worked with the legal team, and at the time, it was with Craig, to really narrow down and make it so it was a, a contract that we felt like was fair to everyone, you know, we make sure we were protected, but at the same time, it wasn't so cumbersome, that if you didn't have a team that was doing contracts, you wouldn't even worry about it, you know? And I know that one of the electricians that, that we use, I know that there's contracts that they just passed on, because they wouldn't, they didn't have anybody that could take that kind of time. So, it was very important for us to make sure that we did make it to where that it was easy enough, but yet, had it was fulfilled the needs of the town, to where that we could get, try and get that sort of thing. But we just, we just didn't get anybody that came into it.
I think the councilman raises a good, a good point. In the past, have we had any local contractors bid on anything like this? Do you know?
I don't know the answer to that.
Do you have any idea how many contractors there are? Electrical, for example?
In the town, I do not know.
Okay. But I think he raises an interesting question, which is, why not? And I don't quite know how to deal with that, but...
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. Kevin, I mean, I know there is, especially with some electrical guys that I know, I know they've done some commercial, or, you know, in town and in the valley, but I mean, is it fair to say a lot of the stuff that you're going to be asking them to do is more commercial, a little more higher-end, a little more, I don't want to say difficult, but I mean, most of the guys, you know, plumbers that I, you know, I know like 10 plumbers, but, you know, they're residential-type, type guys, and I'm not sure if they'd feel comfortable dealing with some of our restrooms. You know, I don't know. I'm just trying to throw that out there. Like, maybe that's an issue. I don't know, and I don't know how you could overcome that.
So, I can speak to my experience. So, in our restrooms, our commercial toilets hang on the walls. And I had an issue about a year and a half ago, where we had an issue in Fountain Park restroom on a holiday weekend, on a Friday of a Monday holiday. And so, I needed help right away, and I was calling anyone and everyone, trying to get help. And when it came down to, does the toilet hang on the wall? There was, I bet I called 10 different people, and all of them said, we don't work on this. They wouldn't even come out. And so, and I started, because I was trying to find someone here close, because it wasn't even, you know, it was an emergency, so we were trying to get anyone we could get in here. And, and I called, and I was, and they would go, well, try this guy. And I was even getting recommendations from people, and calling the other people, and they were, no, yeah, we don't touch those. So, there definitely is that aspect of it that, that I'm sure has some to do with it. And, and that's something where, you know, if they, if they won't work on the equipment that we have, then it doesn't, does any good to have them on.
I do want to just speak to this, if, if I may, and that is, you recall the council retreat, the council brought up the fact that they want to have, see if there's more opportunities that our local vendors could get involved in. And so, we really have done, in my opinion, a really good job. I know that some of the marketing we're doing is local. In fact, one of the people that is involved in Rotary with, with myself and others, she went, she, independently of that, she was contacted by James, and she's doing a lot of the social media work as well. We've used a local videographer to help with that general plan video. There's a big emphasis that we're doing now that we didn't do before. So, I just want to make sure that you understand that I'm disappointed we didn't get the vendors on this that were local, because I have used both a local plumber and a local electrician, and they're excellent. And it's unfortunate that they're not on the job order contracts before you. But we went through a process that we followed, and it probably was the amount of effort and paperwork that was involved in having to submit. That probably was a turnoff to people or companies that wanted to do that. So, unfortunately, in this particular case, I'll tell you, it didn't turn out the way I was hoping, but we're still trying to kick up and generate more opportunities for the local vendors here in town.
Thank you. Do we have any speaker? Oops. Councilman?
You've got to have people that have the expertise to do the job. That's what it boils down to. And if they're not, if they don't have that, then we don't want them on that list, I guess, you know?
Thank you. Do we have speaker cards? No? Any other comments? Somebody want to give me a motion, please? On page 207.
Are we, um...
Just scroll down a little bit.
Oh, it's not these?
Just scroll, just keep scrolling a little bit, and see where it says recommended motion, suggested motion.
Okay. Yeah, move to approve job, job order master agreement contracts, numbers 2021-007A, 2021-07B, 2021-007C for general plumbing services.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Do we have a presentation, or we just go right to the next one?
Yeah, it's basically the same, the same thing that we're voting on, on this one, is the same as what it was for the plumbing. This is just for electrical services only.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
So, move, let's move forward and approve this one as well, for contracts 21008A, 2021008B, 2021008C, 2021008D, and 202108E.
Thank you. Are, did we have any cards? Sorry. Great. We have a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Oh, thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
For all that work, as always. Our next item is, Justin is up here, I see, on deck. So, Grady, do you want to lead off?
No, I'll have Mr. Weldy, our public works director, present the next few items. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Weldy.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, new vice mayor. The first item that is up before you tonight is a two-part professional services agreement with Kimberly Horn and Associates. And we'll spend a little bit of time talking about the first part of this. The first part of this is to evaluate the intersection of Palisades and Palomino for a traffic signal. As you know, we have had some growth in that area, including, but not limited to, the expansion recently of Copperwind, the expansion and/or the starting of Phase Two of Adaro Canyon. And in that general area, including, but not limited to, homes to the north and west of there, into Eagles Nest, and other single home sites on several of the streets, we've had an increase in traffic. Several years ago, we decided to put this into the capital projects, so we could keep it on our radar should there be a need in the future to build a traffic signal. And I wanted to spend a couple of minutes and just go over some of the stuff that they'll be looking at. Oftentimes, when you hear people refer to warrants, you more often than not, look to the police department. In this case, the manual on uniform traffic control devices is the manual that is the guidance for the majority of all the traffic control devices within the streets and right-of-ways in the United States of America, and also what the town relies on and our engineers. I'm going to go over a couple of warrants here. The first warrant for this could possibly be an eight-hour vehicular volume. The second warrant could possibly be a four-hour. Number three is peak. I'm going to spend a little time on that one. Peak flow is historically in larger communities, where you have an outbound flow early in the morning, and between 7:00 AM and 7:45 or 8:00 AM, you have a large volume and large numbers of platoons of traffic moving in one direction, heading out. Pedestrian volume is number four on this list. At this particular location, it's one of our only locations in this area that requires a vehicle to come to a complete stop. That is an ideal crossing location for pedestrians. The fifth one is a school crossing. Not going to impact us on that one. The sixth one is coordinated signals. Coordinated signals is when you have a series of signals in a row, and they're all coordinated to allow all the platoons going in one direction, to all proceed that direction at one time through several different intersections. Number seven is crash experience. We have, and I will tell you, for this intersection, we have very low crash data, but we do have some crashes there. Eight is the roadway network, and lastly, is the intersection near a grade cross- And lastly, is the intersection near a grade crossing, which we won't be having problems with that, because we don't have any railroad there. Should also be noted that for this particular one, Phase One of this is determine, is to determine how many or if we meet any warrants. If we meet any warrants in this, which will be through a series of data collection that we already have, and some that we'll be collecting as well, then we'll move to the next part. The next part of it is going to be preparing a preliminary design, cost estimates, and scoping documents that will define the project improvements necessary for a fully functional four-legged traffic signal. Lastly, after all that, which is Phase Three, that's the final design. It should be noted that the first segment of this will likely take six or seven or eight months. We do have monies in this year's budget in the amount of $50,000 that will cover the first part of this, which is a relatively low number. We will most certainly, as part of our budget planning, need to plan for the next phase next year should we meet our warrants. And because we're planning for budgets, what we're going to have to do is ask them to give us an engineer's estimate, reasonable but not unreasonable, so we conclude that in the budget. Staff will be coming back to the mayor and council with those budgets in the future for your approval. And then the last part, again, is the final design. Put it all together, get the final design, then we have to determine when we want to construct it, which is, again, it's a process. This is not a six or eight month total. We're looking at a couple of years here before we can get all this done and get all of the monies budgeted. Are there any questions in regards to the first part of this related to Palisades, Palomino, Eagle Ridge Drive?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. The development agreement with Copperwind, Adaro, if I recall, third phase of the Adaro Copperwind Development Agreement, there was an allocation of a half a million dollars or something, I believe. Maybe I'm not exact on the number, but is the, this design work in anticipation for their third phase, and then when you say we need to find the money, isn't that money coming from that development agreement?
Madam Mayor, councilmember, Mr. Miller, go ahead, please.
Yeah. Good question, councilmember. So the development agreement, you'll recall, with the owner-operator of Copperwind, now the Adaro, called on that with the traffic study, it identified that it would be upon completion of the third phase, that would generate sufficient traffic from that development, that they would be a party and have to be a participant in financially contributing to that intersection traffic signal. So at this point, there's really not, we don't know if they're going to do that or not, but this warrant, we need to see if there is the justification for going forward with the design and all that. The way this would work is in the event that we ended up having the warrant, it's meeting the warrants for a traffic signal, we would basically be able to get them on the hook for that in the future when they did develop it. So we would hold that, you know, and we would have a record of that and let them know that when they do develop that that will be something that they'll need to pay the town. As far as, some people have asked me about Adaro Canyon and Toll Brothers, and why are they not a participant? If you recall, Toll Brothers acquired the property from MCO. MCO originally did a small contribution many, many years ago for that intersection, for their portion. So that's already taken care of, because all they did was they acquired the property from MCO, and that's already been accounted for.
So how many warrants have to be met to, to do a signal?
Technically, you really only need to meet one, but we'll be looking probably at two or three. It's not uncommon for us to meet the peak volume flow for the eight-hour. But we'll, we'll probably meet two, and I say probably, there is a probable cause of meeting two of the warrants.
So you're asking tonight for approval to fund all three phases, so if, I mean, I'm sure you're right, but if, so if we don't meet the warrants, everything's just going to stop after Phase One, or?
That's an excellent question, councilmember. And I explained this earlier today to the Madam Mayor. The notice to proceed in the purchase order will only be, cover the first phase. In the event that we meet the warrants and a decision is made by this elected body and the town manager to move forward with the next phase, then we will issue a new purchase order. So it's all one big contract, but we're only going to pay them in the phase segments. So they will not have any additional money beyond Phase One until we have agreed to and sent them a notice to proceed on Phase Two, and the same for Phase Three.
So you're saying at Phase One, we meet two or three warrants, then you're going to come back for the next phase and get approval? Is that what you just said?
Not, we're not going to be coming back for approval. What we'll do is a staff update. Most likely, the town manager will provide an update stating that we had met the warrant, or more than one warrant, or I can do it at a presentation.
So basically, you're just saying if we meet the warrants, we're just going to go ahead into Phase Two, et cetera, et cetera, based on what we're being asked to approve tonight?
Correct.
And I just want to be clear, too. So the council preauthorizes to be here tonight, because this is in the current capital improvement program for this year, just for this phasing and this design work. So you'll get into the discussion if, once it comes back, with their findings and recommendations. If, if it is that they're finding there's warrants for a traffic signal, then that will definitely be when we get into the capital improvement program budget discussion for next year. You'll have that information, hopefully, in time for that. But we will not be proceeding without the council authorizing that as a project to build that.
Vice Mayor?
I know this will come as a surprise to most of you, because you know how much I love spending money on studies. I believe, and you can correct me, Justin, if I'm wrong, but we're going to have a traffic study during COVID, where vehicle traffic, you can just tell in town, is down dramatically. You're not going to have as many snowbirds coming in. Also during this COVID, I think we need to be very cautious with the amount of money that we spend. I know it's something that needs to be done, but I just think if we have a study on traffic and the amount of traffic is not going, we're going to, not going to measure a true indicator of what traffic is because of the pandemic. So like I said, I'm not a fan of, this is a lot of money, and I'm wondering if this is something that we could just put off for a little while. I got some emails from residents who live in that area and travel that area, and are very happy with the way that the area is. They don't think it's warrants that kind of a light right now. And they also express concerns about spending that kind of money right now. So I just think with the condition, financial conditions that we're in, the uncertainty moving forward, as well as the fact that I don't think you're going to get a true and accurate account of the traffic that's going through there. Keep in mind, a lot of us are telecommuting, so we're still staying at home. So that's just my two cents.
Thank you for that. Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, if I may, we are fortunate at this particular intersection to have relatively recent historic data. So we have the data from Copperwind, Adaro of Scottsdale, also from Adaro Canyon. We are also fortunate enough, and I use those words loosely, to have the traffic data from Daybreak. With that said, they have comprehensive studies, and then late last year and early this year, the town did its own up there in order to provide data to the mayor and council in regards to the proposal to reduce the speed limit on Palisades. I certainly understand what you're saying. Fortunately, in this case, we have historic, recent data, and then we have post-pandemic data in regards to the counting. The only data that we're lacking in regards to this intersection is turning movements, and that's a few thousand dollars to get that, because we don't have the recorded turning movements at the intersection. The remainder of the data, we pretty well have with some historic timelines, and I'm less concerned about the, the traffic right now, because agreed, it is down, but the previous two studies were at peak flows. So we have that to go by.
I don't know that we'll ever be back to peak flows, given this pandemic and what we see on the horizon. We might, we might very well be shut down again. So I know you have those studies out there, but again, there are a lot of people that are now permanently telecommuting, and they're not going to be going back to the office. I just thought I would mention that.
Understood.
Justin, you said if Phase One doesn't have the number of warrants you expect, how much would Phase One cost us?
I don't have that in front of me. It's in the bottom of the documents. It's about $17,000, if I'm not mistaken.
I'm sorry?
About $17,000.
Yeah, I, I guess, honestly, I have some of the same concerns that have been raised. I, like the rest of the council, probably go through that, I went through that area twice just today. I, I'm hard pressed to see what the problem is. And you said the number of crashes was limited, is that right?
It's one of our lower crash volumes in that intersection. Again, this is to help us determine what we're going to need to budget for in the future, because traffic signals have gone far above the half a million dollar mark. And by at least having the design ready, it will at least give us an idea of what we're going to cost, and in the future, should we decide to go forward, if we don't move forward now, we'll at least then have that design.
I guess I'll go along with $17,000 expenditure, but after that, I'm going to have to be convinced, because right now, I guess I'm not.
Thank you. One of the things I want to mention is, you've probably heard us talking about Prop 400, Mike and I, a lot, the reauthorization of a 20-year transportation plan, and so these things are based on modeling. And I know, I was guilty of this myself, with the right turn on Palomino, I'm like, well, what's the big deal, you know? Not that many people turn right. But what I think we have to recognize is that what we're, what we experience when we go through at certain times, and even if it's for commuting, is not what is going to be there in 18 months or two years, particularly with Adaro Canyon filling up, and with the, when the pandemic is better, even if, even if it does change the culture and more people are working from home, the Copperwind is going to be there. So I think, you know, since this Phase One is pretty limited, and I don't really have, I asked the same thing, you know, why are we doing all three? But we're not, we're not technically doing all three, we'll do the one, and if it comes back that we should look ahead, I don't think that that is that much. I mean, there's 175,000 minus 15,000, which is just our cushion, so that's for both of these projects. So I think I'm comfortable moving ahead with these things right now. But if, do we have any speaker cards on this item?
No speaker cards, but I did get a written request to comment form from someone opposed.
Okay, thank you. Councilman?
Yeah. It occurs to me that Copperwind isn't likely to add to traffic in peak hours. I just don't see that for a facility like that. But I'm a little puzzled by the motion. What are we approving? 175,000?
That is correct, councilmember, but there's a second phase to this that we've not yet broken into for a separate intersection that's included in that dollar amount.
Yeah, vice mayor. So if you want, he can go ahead and talk about that intersection, and then, because it is all in one motion, and if you want to separate it out, or you want to amend it, or do anything, yes, councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. No, I just had a quick, one or two things yet on this particular issue. Is, is Palisades the busiest boulevard, or Saworo? I mean, Shea is, but I mean, coming into town, I think it's Palisades, isn't it?
I would, I don't have that data in front of me. I know that we had a relatively high count at Sunridge and Palisades compared to, let's say, Saworo and the Avenue of the Fountains, if we're, if we're discussing, you know, midway northbound.
Well, you know, I understand if there's some immediate neighbors that would be opposed to this, but on the other hand, you know, this is about the improving, you know, the staff report says improving the flow of traffic. And, you know, a four-way stop, I mean, there are a lot of people complained when the stop signs went up at Avenue and Saworo, like, oh, it's just a waste, we have to stop there, there's hardly any cars coming off Avenue, and, you know, but the stop signs went up, and that type of thing. And I would think if I was living near that corner, if you have the constant stopping and starting of all kinds of vehicles and trucks, that might even be more detrimental than having a, these vehicles flowing through on a green light on a predominant basis, you know, and then a couple of cars might stack up coming out of Adaro or whatever, and then the light, light trips. So I just think, you know, you have to think about the flow of traffic in a bigger picture. It's not just the, the local things that are happening, it's about, you know, and I think the, there's, you know, kind of hills and curves coming up to that intersection. I just think this is kind of a weird-type intersection that I just think someday, there's, there has to be a signal there. I just don't, you know, see one not happening, just like the one at Sunridge Canyon entrance. So I, to me, you know, it's good planning to at least go forward and make, you know, allowance for this to happen. It's not going to happen next year, so.
Thank you. Any other comments, councilman?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just need a further clarification. What is the 15917 owner's allowance?
That's for items that may be outside of the scope, that we certainly, the unknowns for both of the intersections. That is at the town's discretion to use for either one of the two studies, should something come up that's not included in the scope.
The 175082, is it 17,000 of that would be for Phase One, of that amount?
Approximately, and, and I was just searching through my documents on this machine, and I don't have them. They are, however, attached to the documents and the agenda. So at the bottom of that agreement are both of the proposals. I don't have the same screen that you guys have for the agenda.
Okay.
But it's in there, and I believe it's, the first one is around 17,000.
Okay, if he goes on and talks about the other intersection? Thank you.
The next one is the intersection of Fountain Hills Boulevard and Palisades. Excuse me. Making improvements to this intersection has been a top priority of the council for several years. A traffic analysis will review signal timing, operation, and changes necessary to improve operations. It will also evaluate the left turn storage lengths. And on that one right there, at several council meetings, we've had people stand right here or send emails or phone calls stating that northbound Fountain Hills, left turn to westbound, that the stacking there was coming out into the number one northbound lane, so it chicaned out into the travel lane. Also, that that northbound left turn stacking was not being serviced by the timing, meaning that protected left turn, that green arrow, was not long enough. And so we had cycles or phases of the intersection that were not being serviced. We'd noted that there were at least two peak times this was happening, in the morning and at lunchtime. So we anticipate that some of this uptick in traffic is a result of the high school on their way in and out, and also to lunch. It should also be noted that this particular traffic signal, when taken over from Maricopa County, has had only one change, and that was to take it to the full-fledged, four-legged, protected left turns that it is now. It has not had an evaluation in at least 20 years, so the evaluation and the timing phases that it is currently using were based on traffic from 20 years ago. So this is a good idea to take a comprehensive look at this intersection and determine whether or not our timing phases are correct, if we are servicing the queues that we are receiving, and also, this will be another opportunity for us to determine whether or not the protected left turns are necessary for this intersection.
Yeah, I can attest to the fact that that's a dangerous situation. If you're coming out of If you're coming out of Safeway and you want to go left on Palisades, you have to wait for the traffic that's heading north on Fountain Hills Boulevard and scoot across to the stacking lane, hoping the stacking lane isn't backed up. I've experienced that a number of times, so I think that's worth looking at.
Thank you. Any further questions about this intersection? I know we talked about it in the past. Are there any speaker cards on this one? I think I just looked and found it looks like the Phase One might be 21,000. Does that sound right?
That sounds, yes, that sounds reasonable. I had loaded it onto the iPad, but as I'm learning to use this device, I'm realizing...
So Justin, just so that I, for the clarity of everybody, I think the mayor is correct on this. I just want to make sure that they understood what was before them was not only both, the two parts, like you talked about, the intersection and the warrant study, but you, you built in the full cost from Phase One to Three, which Phase Three for that intersection or traffic signal included the design of a traffic signal, correct?
Design.
So that's a little premature, and, you know, if you wanted to make a reduction of that at this point, I think what he was trying to do was lock in pricing today for the potential design of that. But we're not locked into, if you prove this tonight, that they're going to do that, we're going to be coming back to you with the findings and recommendations at that point. Is that, is that clear?
Yes.
Mayor? If I could just add, I, I wanted to clarify, this comment card that was received also mentions the Palisades-Fountain Hills intersection, and they're opposed to it as well.
Opposed to both, okay.
Opposed to both. They feel they're both working fine.
Do you have a name on that?
Sure, Richard Radkowski.
Thank you. Okay, so if there's no, if there are no further questions, we have a motion that would take care of everything altogether, which I'm fine with, if you want to do that, that's on four, page 469. If you don't have any other questions.
Mayor, you're taking a vote, you're going to do it both together?
That's the way the motion is, it's up to, you know, I'm just telling you where the motion is written, and you can say it however you'd like, if someone would like to make a motion. It's on page 469.
I'll just move to approve the suggested motion as written.
Thank you. Okay, so the motion is for the 175, 175,082, 15,900 of that is, is an owner's allowance, and that's for the design of Palisades Boulevard, Eagle Ridge, Palomino, and the Fountain Hills Boulevard, Palisades Boulevard intersection analysis. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Um, do you, did, do you need that? Do you need to roll call?
Yeah, I think I should, I am more than sure.
Okay, we can do a roll call. Councilmember Friedel? Councilmember Magazine?
Aye.
Councilmember Tolles? Councilmember Charnell?
Aye.
Mayor Dickey?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Spelitch?
Nay.
So it doesn't go all right?
So it's three to three, it does not move forward.
Okay, so, well, we'll just, we'll just regroup and figure out what you want to do, huh, Grady?
Can they go back and reconsider and split it up?
Yeah, it's in there.
Yeah, so mayor members of council, there, there are a couple of options at this point. The first would be, you know, the staff could regroup and come back at a later date. The second option, as Manager Miller was just mentioning, would be if the council wants to reconsider the, the matter, they can vote to do so, and then limit the motion to something that's more preferable. It's really up to the council how it wants to proceed.
So in other words, if you wanted to split it, it sounds like it's very obvious that the signal is the one that is contentious. So if you wanted to consider the stacking at Palisades and Fountain Hills Boulevard, then that could come back.
We can do that, even though we just did what we did?
Because they were combined, yeah.
You didn't split them. I know, well, we could, somebody could have split them, but they didn't.
They could reconsider the vote, is what he's saying.
Okay. Make it a separate motion, with just one of the...
Councilman?
Yeah, I'm going to move approval...
Wait, sorry, someone has to move for reconsideration, and then second, and then we have to vote on whether to reconsider the item.
Someone who voted no.
Someone who voted...
Even though the combined projects were voted down, you have to reconsider that motion? That doesn't sound right to me.
Mayor, members of council, I want to make sure I get it right. Would you mind giving me a moment, mayor?
Of course.
Thank you.
There's somebody, there's somebody who would know, prepared to make the motion on just one of them.
I think that's the reconsider. I think that's correct.
What about like Phase One of Darrow and then the Safeway one? I don't know how much, how much is the Safeway intersection?
There was no majority. Well, the majority was to deny it.
The majority was, I guess that's true.
21,000, council member, is for the Fountain Hills Boulevard-Palisades.
No, the other one. Oh, so they're both 21?
Yeah.
Well, that's, there's...
Was it 17, when was 21?
Fountain Hills Boulevard at Palisades is just one. It's just one phase to do it all, to do the, and so their proposal, proposal is 21,480 for that one.
And then there's like 21 for the other?
The 21 was for the Phase One, yeah. It was like 21,500. It's like, you can, you can find it even on the side, but it's a...
Reconsidering, reconsidering.
I'm not sure if it's a low, I'm not sure if it's a low. I'm not sure if it's a...
You would know it all, maybe different levels are.
The verdict?
It's complicated.
Yeah.
I bet you anything a lawyer wrote it. Okay. So, mayor, the, the council rules of procedure in E, section 6.6, E3, say that for reconsideration, any council member who voted with the majority may move for reconsideration of any action at the same or next regular meeting. So as Liz and I were discussing, I mean, there's no majority. So I think that, I think the proper action then would simply be someone else make a motion on the item and move forward. So I appreciate taking the, allowing me the time to make that clarification.
Thank you. Councilman?
Yeah, I'm going to move approval of the amount, whatever it is, 21,000, for design of the intersection of Fountain Hills Boulevard and Palisades.
It's not a design.
Not the, not the design, whatever it is.
It's a safety analysis, based on the lights and the timing.
Yeah, okay.
Mayor, I'm confused. So both of these studies are 21,000?
They, it seems to be.
Well, Phase One.
So both are 21,000?
Well, I just looked at, yeah, the first one does, and then they said the second one is two.
So where did the 175 come in?
The, two and three.
So you would have been, if you approved that motion the way it was written, you would have been pre-authorizing up to that amount, but was not committing the town to spend that amount. Only if it came back and you agreed with the warrants to proceed with the next phase, then we wouldn't have to be coming back and awarding contracts, we would just have one contract awarded.
Mayor?
Councilman?
But that amount is for both projects.
It is.
And my motion is for one project, which is the Fountain Hills Boulevard and Palisades project.
Okay, so don't put an amount on that, because I'm not positive about that. So just say, for that one project.
That's what I did, that's what I said.
But you said the 21,000.
Oh, okay, all right.
You have the amount.
You do have a number you need for that.
It's in the packet right here.
It's in the packet. I, I don't have the complete packet with me, it's, it's on your screen.
We, she's correct, though, we verified, just to authorize as presented or proposed to, so I think that's...
That's the motion.
No. Wait a minute. No offense, guys, it's not that I trust, don't trust you. I think we should take a moment to look at this, and let's get a dollar amount that it is, and let's, let's figure out what it is. I don't want to leave anything open-ended, not that I don't trust everybody here, but I don't trust everybody here. So let's just get a, let's get the amount that it's going to be, and then let's make, you know, let Councilman Magazine make the motion for the exact amount, not this open-ended thing.
It wouldn't be open-ended, because it's written down.
Yeah. Oh, you're looking, I don't know. Yep, that's one.
21,400.
So, so Justin, it's 21,480 is the number. But, but you had an owner's allowance, was that primarily for the intersection with the traffic signal? How much of that owner allowance were you anticipating would be on this intersection?
10% historically.
So it's 21,480 plus...
You know what, we're not, we're not going to bother with owner allowance on this. If you don't mind, we're going to go with the 21,480 dollars, as stated in the staff report, so please.
That's my motion for that one intersection.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second.
Discussion?
Any further discussion?
I would just say, I, I'm going to second that motion for this particular, based on the safety issues of that intersection, which is, which is accurate. I mean, I, you know, I'm in and out of there, as all of you are on a regular basis, and there's no question that that is a backup area, and, and we know it, we've stated it at the council, we've acknowledged that, so it's the right thing to do to go forward with this.
Uh, councilman? No? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Hard to get there.
Yeah, it's okay. That's how it works. No problem at all. Next, we have another item, which is a professional services agreement with Brown and Associates.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This amendment for you tonight is, is to cover primarily the vacancy we have as a result of the town engineer having retired. Excuse me. It also has a caveat in there that it was used for in the past, should it become necessary, that this agreement will also allow for inspections for the building safety division, should they need it as they move forward. At the time the staff report was prepared, they had not yet made an offer and did not have an employee coming in for that. So in my dollar amount threshold, I included any that they may need on their side as well. But again, primarily, this is for the backfilling temporarily to support the position recently vacated by the town engineer. So we have help there, we don't get behind on any projects.
Thank you. Any questions on this item? Do we have any speaker cards?
No.
No, councilman? Vice Mayor?
Grady, would, do you have any idea what the estimated time or what we're projecting it's going to be until we fill that position?
Vice Mayor, we just closed the recruitment last Friday, I believe. We've have, I believe, eight applicants that have applied. I'm hopeful that we'll be able to get this position filled probably within the next three to four weeks. We have to schedule, obviously, we're getting into the Thanksgiving holiday and all that. The other position is a building inspector position, that's been an ongoing opening. We have just made an offer to somebody that starts on November 30th. So the $35,000 is the worst-case scenario. There's also some need, because that contract has been tapped, to help replenish some of the money, is, David, aren't they very close to being either at the end or close to...
What's available.
What's available, yes. So, to your point, we, we probably won't spend the full amount. When I actually did the estimate myself, it was much more, less than this, but in talking to the staff, they thought 35,000 gave us a little bit more cushion just to be on the safe side.
Any further discussion? Can I get a motion, please? On page 518.
I'll move to approve contract amendment number three, professional services agreement, C2019-002, Brown Associates Certified Inspection Services, in the amount of 35,000.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks a lot. So our next item just got a little more complicated, but we'll get through it. It's the capital projects status and what, what we decide to move forward with.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. If you'll recall, earlier in this fiscal year, the town manager noted that we would be back to give an update to the mayor and council on projects. We are here tonight to do that. The, the staff report is intended to provide the town council with an update of the FY 2020-21 capital improvement projects identified as priorities during the 2021 budget process. And the latter part of this will be the remaining capital projects that are approved as part of the budget, but not on the priority list.
And I just want to clarify, they're all, they're all priorities, but not necessarily top priorities. So council was concerned about the pandemic and the impact on our revenues, and so we were wanting to take a very conservative approach. So the council approved the capital improvement program budget for this year with the caveat that we engage or go forward on these top priorities that he's about to present and defer moving forward on the others. And so with the financial presentation that you had last month from Finance Director Puck, we're wanting to see if you're willing to go forward on, moving forward on the remaining projects that are in the project budget this year. Mr. Welby?
Thank you for that clarification and additional information. The high pri, the higher priority projects are listed as Golden Eagle impoundment area. This area, as you'll recall, was severely flooded on October 2nd of 2018, and again on September 23rd in 2019. Since that time, J.E. Fuller has been working with staff to get that project moving forward. There have been a couple of minor setback challenges that we've had in regards to two other governmental agencies and their necessity and requirement to do some review. I'm happy to report at this time that the Phase One plans for that are about 60%, which is pretty substantial if you consider all of the work necessary for this. The next one is the Panorama storm drain pipe replacement. You'll recall that we had hoped this would move considerably faster through the system, and actually came to the mayor and council and asked for authorization to proceed with the design contract, came back to the mayor and council and for the, that to be colorized at a later date. We then moved forward with the release. We did actually publicly advertise that project, selected a bidder, brought that before the mayor and council for award of contract, and they did so. That project is currently scheduled to start on November 30th of this year, and ideally should be completed with a minimal amount of cleanup, right in the end of January, beginning of February, depending on the weather conditions. The next one is the Fountain Lake liner replacement assessment. Not very long ago, right here in these very chambers, the mayor and council were given a comprehensive update of the findings of that, and at least I, for one, was delighted to see that we weren't doom and gloom, that we actually had some additional time to prepare. As a member of the staff that oftentimes has to determine how to best approach to ask for additional money for something that we weren't aware of, I'm delighted to see that Ms. Goodwin has an opportunity to plan for that moving forward. The next one is the fountain lighting replacement. If I'm not mistaken, based on the information that I had received, that one is scheduled for completion very, very soon, and I'm not certain whether or not it was complete.
A little stiff back there. You're right, we are moving forward with the fountain lighting replacement. It is on schedule to be unveiled on our anniversary date of December 15th, so we're in the planning stages and the final stretch there, so we are still on track for that. Thank you.
The next item is the intersection of Avenue of the Fountains and La Montana. For those of you that have not had an opportunity, that traffic circle is completed and is in use. We have some pavement markings and a few other things to complete that, that will take place over the next few days. take place over the next few days. The last one on this list is the Fountain Hills Boulevard Shoulder Paving. This project has been many, many years in the making, and now we're nearing the completion of Phase Two of the shoulder paving. They are currently catching back up to their own baseline schedule. They were about two weeks behind due to some equipment issues, and also without going into anything personal, they had a couple of their team members that recently had a health scare. And so they had to make some changes and shift things around. However, they are still anticipating that that project will be completed right near the end of December with cleanup probably into the beginning of January. These are photos of the projects that I had mentioned. Golden Eagle Empoundment. This is the one that causes Kevin to have nightmares. This is the Panorama Storm Drain Pipe. This is the Fountain Lake Liner Assessment with not only the dollar amount that was spent, but the total project estimated. Fountain Lighting Replacement. The intersection of Avenue of the Fountains in La Montana. And lastly, the Fountain Hills Boulevard Shoulder Paving Phase Two. The following projects have been on hold pending the financial report. As you'll recall, Mr. Pock gave the financial report here very, uh, two weeks ago, I believe, or three weeks ago, and noted that we were in considerably better financial condition than we had anticipated or believed could happen. So this one right here, this project up before you, this is a multi-year, and what this does is this puts $50,000 in the capital projects to address miscellaneous drainage improvements. These are things that may pop up or that we may identify that are just into the threshold of capital improvements. A good example of this was we used some of this funding in the past to take, take care of some drainage issues at Eagle Mountain that we were not aware of. The next one is a proposed project. This is referred to as the Polina-Brantley Detention Basin. This is in the northeast side of town. This is, um, just south of Grande. There is a considerable amount of water that falls on that mountainside, and we had some streets and drainage structures that were inundated there and entered into one or more private properties, including a private home. So the intent is to put together a design to see if some of this stormwater can be collected at the top of the mountain and slowly released through a detention basin. This one is the HVAC controllers that operate the, um, physical plant over at the community center or adjacent to the community center. This is our fire alarm control panel that is outdated to say the least and certainly needs to be replaced with modern technology. This is a very popular one, our sidewalk infill program. This photo was actually taken shortly after we completed the segment on Palisades on the south side of the road between Golden Eagle and Hamstead. And I also might note that not only this one, but several others that we have done over the last couple of years are being heavily used, and we've received some very nice comments. This is one that we were just discussing not very long ago, Palisades at Eagle Ridge in Palomino, the traffic signal. This is the Four Peaks Park Upgrade. This is a multi-year, multi-phase project. Would you like to comment on that, Rachel?
Let's see, if, uh, I think many of you are familiar with the Four Peaks Park Project. Um, it's been a phased process over, uh, it started about a year ago. Um, last December, we introduced a new playground, uh, a number of improvements at the ball fields. Kevin mentioned we have redone the restroom over there. So this would be a continuation of the efforts that have been ongoing at that park.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This one right here is the Four Peaks Playground Parking Lot. What this will do is pave the area adjacent to the newly installed playground and provide a shorter route or access to some of the amenities that are there. Well, the last slide should have said questions, but apparently... There were no questions. It should also be noted that it was brought to my attention today that we have a multi-year project that did not make this slide despite the fact that it's in the budget, and that is our security cameras for our parks and other town buildings townwide in the amount of $50,000 is what's been budgeted for that one annually for the last several years.
Thank you, Justin. Been glad that you put that in there. So, um, before we have a discussion, just know that we'll be adding the cameras and taking out the signal, and it might change what the motion is a little bit. So, um, but any discussion? Mike?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, the Brantley Drive Detention Basin, that when you were speaking, you just mentioned the design, but does that include estimated construction too, or just the design is 100,000?
Madam Mayor, council member, this number was estimated based on the geography challenges that we have there, which are rock. So this number was primarily hoping that we could cover the design, and at the time, we had met with a local civil engineer, well-respected just down the street, and we put this number together with him based on some concepts. So it, again, it's, it's, it's going to be a, a rather expensive design, but this does not include construction. This is for the design.
And then, um, I guess I should ask when Rachel was up there, but I'm just wondering what the, uh, park upgrades, 335, what we're looking at there in terms of improvements?
Sure. Um, one of the biggest items that that will cover is a shade structure over the existing playground or the new playground. Um, it will also go towards redoing, uh, and adding an entrance from the south side. So if you're familiar with the layout between where the Boys and Girls Club is and the EBIT building, um, there is no community access through there. So we would like to open that to, um, include a new entry and some improvements through there, as well as continue the walking paths to complete the loop through the community, or through the park.
And are you talking about pedestrian entrance or not vehicular, right?
Correct. It would be pedestrian. So there's parking over there, but there's a big fence, and you see the idea of you can't get there from here. Um, so we'd like to open that up so that folks can access the park from that side.
It is a little challenging because, um, because of the grade. You know, we would love to just put stairs in, but we're going to probably, because of Americans with Disabilities Act, we're going to probably have to do something that's including accessible access, too.
If you haven't been out to that park, the improvements have just been outstanding there, and it's really revitalized that whole area. So I was out there the other day, and the people that were using that park, it's just astounding. So you've done a great job out there.
Great, thank you.
And Kevin's done a super job with the turf. The, the turf just looked, it was that, um, that grass that typically you get like the little burrs in your socks or whatever. He's totally turned that grass around to it's, it's beautiful now.
I used to coach a little league out there, and, uh, the difference between when I was out there and when I was just out there is like night and day. So it's really a drastic improvement. So...
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to go back to the Polina-Brantley Drive Detention Basin. Could you explain what that is and why it is again?
What it is, for lack of a better description, is we'll dig a hole in the side of that mountain just behind the gate in the gated community where the town does have a drainage easement and right-of-way, and collect the water as it comes down off of that mountain and put it into this big basin, and then slow it down as it goes down that steep road heading down Brantley to intersect with El Pueblo on the bottom. On its way down there, it overtops curves, enters private property, and two storms back entered a private residence. So the intent is to try and slow it down and minimize the outflow so we don't have as severe overtopping or outflow from the street.
And these are not normal rain, uh, storms that we've had. This is the two really bad ones that the town experienced. Um, and that same street and that same residence, um, on that street experienced the issues with the drainage and what was coming off the hill and mountain. It, it came so quickly that if there's not a, any kind of a detention basin to slow it down, we're going to continue to have these issues.
Yeah, you anticipated my next question, which was, is it affecting any homes? Apparently it is. Um, just another comment. When we discussed these at the work session and decided to hold these in abeyance, um, it was a concern about income because of COVID. Um, I really think that the income is likely to be even worse in the coming months than it was March, April, May, from everything we've seen. Uh, the COVID is increasing exponentially. Places are closing down, schools, other things. Um, and if there were to be a stay-at-home order or anything like that, then more of our businesses would be in peril, um, and we wouldn't have the, uh, increase or the amount of tax that we had expected. So let me ask Grady. I'm, I have, I can see the need for some of this. Uh, some of it, I'm not so sure, but talk to me about your own forecast as you look ahead.
Sure. Well, for one, um, we're, we've been a lot more insulated than some of the other communities. Um, those that have things like auto sales or, you know, an airport or, um, a lot of hospitality, like hotels and such, they've been devastated. And we're more of a bedroom community, so we've, actually, our, our revenues have been considerably more stable. I, I totally agree with everything you just said, um, but we have seen that there has been, uh, greater stability than what we were anticipating. The, um, the capital fund is probably the most stable of all of our cap, of all of our different funds. I'm really more concerned on, from the revenue and impact on revenue on the operating budget. The operating budget, um, sales tax, um, is one of the major drivers in this community that funds a lot of our operations. And so we're still watching it. We're, we're monitoring it. I, I totally think things are not, we're not out of the woods yet. Um, but I do think there's been a number of things that have helped us with people staying at home. Unfortunately, they haven't been necessarily shopping as local as we'd like, but from a perspective that when they shop and they, they shop Target or they shop Walmart or Amazon...
Or online.
Or online for the last few years because of a, um, court decision, we're now benefiting from collecting sales tax locally when there's online sales. So that's, that's a plus. It doesn't necessarily help the brick and mortar businesses here in town if people are sitting at home and ordering online, because it, they don't really benefit except for maybe the grocery stores or drugstores or Target.
Am I, am I correct that the funding for these projects is not fungible?
I'll let David, um, Finance Director, respond to the, the question.
Can you repeat your question, please?
The question is, um, the funding for these Table A projects, um, regardless of the projects, the amounts of money and so on, they are not fungible. Is that correct?
You've caught me on a vocabulary word. I don't want it to...
Okay, let me, let me...
Use a different word.
Let me make this, let me make this simple. Can this money be used for anything else?
The money in the capital projects fund can only be used for approved capital projects decided by the council during the budget process or changed throughout the year. So it would not, the funding that we have in capital projects fund could not be used for operating expenses unless the council made a decision to transfer the money out of the capital project into our general fund.
So we can do that?
You could.
I'm not saying we should, but we can.
Absolutely.
That's what I...
So everything that's in the capital projects fund is a committed fund balance. So that's the council's level of authority to decide what to use that money for.
Okay. Um, Grady, let me put you on the spot a little bit, more than I already have. Um, as you look at this list... Are there any that you think we could put, safely put off?
Well, the council helped me a little bit tonight, um, with the Palisades and Eagle Ridge traffic signal, so that, that, that's a very easy one that... Let's just get rid of that one, Justin. Um, but, but back to seriousness, um, a number of these things are, are very important. The Polina-Brantley Drive Detention, um, Basin, we've made a commitment of, of trying to go forward with that. Um, we don't want to have any claims against the town. There were some dollar claims, but they were very low dollar. If it got worse, that would be one that, that this actually could be less than what the claim could be for the damage. Um, the miscellaneous drainage improvements, um, we do several of these throughout the year, um, each year. This is one that appears every year. I, I would tell you that, um, the Four Peaks Park upgrades with what we've done there, I'd like to keep that momentum going. So, and then our fund balance after this is all expended, David, after, um, the budget this year, I'm sorry, after the audit was completed, there's going to be another one to one and a half million dollars deposited into the capital fund. That's been verified that that's additional money. What would that bring? If we were to expend these dollars, what does the capital fund balance go up to? You don't have it off top. I think the last time we looked at it, it would still be about $3 million after you expend this money before you. That would still be in the capital fund.
If worst case were to occur, and I can't even define worst case, um, I can imagine it, um, where we're closed down for a period of time, um, people can't shop, whatever. Are you still, uh, positive about going ahead with all of these?
I am very positive. I would not. In fact, um, just to let you know, on the operating budget, I would have more of a concern there, and early on, I asked the departments to identify potential, uh, 10% cuts if we needed to make cuts. So we're, we're like ahead of the curve. If, if we needed to impose reductions or such, we could do that. I'm not proposing that, but I'm just saying it's more in the operating budget where we're going to need to make reductions, if we had to make reductions. Capital, it's one time. You spend money, that's it, and then you move on.
It should, and I don't mean to interrupt you, council member, it should be noted that with little to no exception, each one of these projects will require a contract, and that contract will be brought back to this elected body for voting on, should, when, as we move forward with them.
Uh, that's, that's an important point.
So you have the final say.
Yeah, because, I mean, contracts are going to take some time before we, I assume, before you bring them before us. So we can see what our, what conditions we have. So that, I think that's an important point. Okay, thank you.
And that's kind of always the case when we do these things. Um, you know, we, when we do our budget, we, because we already approved all these things, but we always know that it's going to come back at some point where we will make the decision, just like we did with the, um, traffic light just now. The traffic light would be off of here, and the cameras, I think, are actually $50,000 for this year, too. So that would kind of gives you the idea that the numbers are the same, but the cameras would be in there instead of the light, right?
Yes.
Mike?
Yeah, no, I, I just think it's important to note that, uh, I mean, this money comes from, uh, peeling off from permits, right? From construction activity out there in the community. I mean, it's...
It, it's a variety of different sources, but the bottom line is the biggest single funder of capital besides development fees, when we have the development fees that are related to what we need. In this case, none of these, I believe, are development fee-related. But it's really our, um, excess surplus at the end of the fiscal year for our policies. It goes into this, and it also, we have to fund up our, um, rainy day fund and our reserves per the financial policies.
But I think it's a 35, 65 split or something.
Yeah.
Right, Mike?
Yeah.
So, you're right, that does...
It's a 50, 50 split with the construction sales tax goes to, to capital. Um, but also, I'm sorry, uh, just to answer Mr. Miller's question about the fund balance, I just looked in, in the financial statements. Uh, we did end the year in the capital projects, um, fund with a $6 million, just over $6 million balance. Uh, then together with the, the transfer between a million, million and a half, that would raise it to seven and a half at the most, and then subtract whatever we spent so far this year, and that's...
Thank you, David.
I mean, and to me, it doesn't seem like it's being reckless to consider these at this time. I mean, it's, uh, money already in the bank, so to speak, and, um, it's kind of separated from, as Grady was saying, the operating fund. And, um, you know, if we're peeling off the 50 from the traffic signal, I mean, the sidewalk infill would probably from the traffic signal, I mean, the sidewalk infill would probably, you know, that's another bigger ticket item that could probably be delayed more so than some of these other ones, even the playground parking lot. I mean, there's a dirt parking lot there now that's been working really well. I mean, I'd rather see the upgrades go forward, you know, if we have to pick and choose on some of the priorities here, but, you know, we're up to almost a million on this, but if you peel back sidewalks and the traffic signal, that's, you know, 1/4 of the total, so I'd be in favor of going forward with all of these.
Thanks. I wanted to mention too, again, we approved them in the budget, and that's the money, that's what David has been using in forecasts, the idea that we actually did this in this, you know, 2021 budget. So I think I tend to go along with what you were saying, the little thing about the sidewalks, you know, I just would really hate to drop that. That's a big part of what our, you know, what we've determined we're gonna do, be safer, be pedestrian-friendly, be a walkable community, and also just to keep it in back of your mind, we're likely up for a very big grant for sidewalks, so this, doing this now, we may end up in '23, I think we were talking, not having to expend any funding on sidewalks. So personally, I'm okay with moving ahead with all of these, which, except for the switch, which would be the cameras instead of the lights.
And if I may make some clarification in regards to the motion, since Table A is incomplete, if you could please leave that out of your motion?
So the suggested motion would basically be move the direct staff to proceed in undertaking the remaining capital projects for fiscal year 2021, with the exception of the Palisades and Eagle Ridge traffic signal.
Yes. Do we have any speaker cards on this item? No? So would somebody like to make the motion as Grady suggested just now? Councilman?
If nobody else is going to, I will, I don't see the motion in front of me, but I'll make, I'll make the motion as Grady stated it.
Okay, works for me.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thanks very much, and obviously, like we said, it comes back to us. This isn't the last we'll see of it. Our last item then is the VICES Engineering Change Order. Grady?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, as you're aware, the roundabout was recently completed. We just had markings and striping that occurred last Thursday, just before the fair. Back in the summer, right after it was started construction, it was identified that there was a potential pedestrian and vehicular safety issue. We had the engineering firm redesign to go back to a design that the council had previously approved, which is a more simplified roundabout without the dedicated right turn that the contractor had put in. Last, I believe it was the last meeting or it was the previous month, council approved the amended contract with the CK Group, which compensated them for the redesign. And then before you tonight is a request for a change order to pay the contractor for an additional money encumbered for the project. The change order request before you is $90,552.94. I'll turn it over to Mr. Woldy, who may have other comments to make or answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Pretty much that is the entire story right there. It should be noted that we are currently working with the vendor on quantities, and we anticipate that it'll be slightly less than this, but we still have some plant establishment and two additional invoices, but it certainly, under no circumstances, will exceed this. But based on the quantities, I am comfortable that it will be slightly less than this amount that we pay them in the end.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So yes, we have discussed this. Anybody have any further, or do we have any cards? No cards? Councilman?
I certainly don't like the idea of spending this money for this, but I understand the necessity. You know, after we approved the roundabout, I have to admit, I had some real second thoughts, but now having seen it and receiving emails from a number of people thanking us, I think we probably did the right thing.
Thank you. Any further discussion or motion, please?
I'll go ahead and move to approve Amendment Number 1, a professional service agreement 2020-087 with VICES Engineering, construction in the amount of $90,552.94 and the associated budget transfer.
Thank you. Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Next is council discussion direction to the town manager. Anything for the good of the order? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Please do that to me. We're adjourned, thank you.